I'll call this Tuesday, June 6, 2017, regular meeting of the Lane County Board of Commissioners to order. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to Harris Hall. Good morning, Ms. Mokraski.
Good morning.
Any adjustments to the agenda? I see none. Then, public comments. We have -- speakers will be taken in the order in which they sign up and be limited to three minutes per public comment. If the -- we have two people signed up today, and you'll hear a little buzzing sound when your three minutes is up. You've heard that before. I'll call you up in the order you signed up, and when you come to the mic, please state your name and address for the record. Then, first signed up is Ann Millholland. Good morning, Ms. Millholland.
Ann Millholland, 2685 Benson Lane in Eugene. I wanted to speak with you about the overnight camping efforts to -- that we visited with you before on the urban growth area, which is going to be discussed, we noted, later The idea of allowing the overnight camping does not actually give lots of housing units, as the council said. It does provide shelter for a few people. We have an enormous waiting line for affordable housing. So you have a lot of people living without shelter, as the last point in time count determined. Those people, if they were provided with a transitional kind of shelter, would be empowered, then, to actually have a more stable life, which would allow them to go on then to the affordable housing when the affordable housing is available. So even though we're talking about a small number of shelters being provided with these changes, the effect for those individuals is enormous. So that has to be weighed. In reading the Lane County Code for Overnight Camping, there is a provision in 11.100-20 Number 4 that is -- that allows permitted temporary overnight camping at religious institutions. This is already on the books. It says, "Persons may sleep overnight in vehicles located in a parking lot of a church, synagogue, religious institution, or other that owns or leases the property on which a parking lot and structure containing a place of worship are located with the permission of the religious institution." Now, this is actually one of the provisions that's included in the Eugene City Code that we were advocating be applied to the urban growth area. So we would like to add on that for the whole county, this be amended to include business or public entities. That would make it actually match the provisions of the city code in place. It would expand the available public availability to unhoused individuals invited by a business or an entity to be able to legally park there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Millholland. Next signed up, we have Betty Grant. Ms. Grant, if you would step forward as soon as I can stop my timer here.
Jay, do you know how to stop this thing?
Bring in the expert.
They do the same thing.
We're good.
Thank you. Jay's younger than I am, so he knows all this stuff.
He knows how to do these electronic devices.
Ms. Grant, thank you.
My name is Betty Grant. I live at 840 Jackson Street in Eugene. Good morning, Commissioners. First of all, I'd like to say I'm 100% in support of what Ann Millholland has just requested of the Commission to change the one code that exists already beyond religious institutions to public entities and businesses. We all are incredibly aware of the housing crisis that we have in our community and around the state. There is indeed a severe shortage of affordable housing, and the waiting lists are enormous. The point in time count every year goes up in terms of the numbers of unhoused residents in our community, and residents are literally dying on the streets. I believe five, six, or more residents died in the Eugene area on the streets last winter. So all this takes a serious commitment, sometimes in terms of funds and often in terms of creative thinking about how we can reach some solutions, and that may include easing and changing code restrictions. On the state level, you may be aware, there are two House bills before the -- before the state legislature this session to attempt to make some changes on the state -- statewide. These are House Bill 2938, which allows recreational vehicles for residential purposes on land zone for either exclusive farming use or rural residential use. There are restrictions about placing those within 100 feet of existing family dwellings. And House Bill 2937, which allows siting of accessory dwelling units on land zone for exclusive farm or rural residential use. I am here to ask the Commission if you have formally taken a stance in support of these measures, and if you have not, would you please put this on your agenda and seriously take a look at doing this? So beyond individual Commissioners, who I understand there is support, this is a request for the Commission as a whole to take a stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. That is the extent of our sign-ups for the public hearing today, public comment session today. Anyone else in the audience wish to address the Board of County Commissioners? I see no one. Then we'll move along to Commissioners' response and/or other issues and remonstrances. Commissioners. Commissioner Sorensen.
I received a letter from the -- from a constituent. I thought I would bring it in today, and after the -- or during a break in the board meeting, I'll give this to Mr. Mokraski, and he can perhaps copy it and maybe put a copy in each of our boxes. But this is from the First United Methodist Church in Eugene, and they are, "Dear Commissioner Sorensen, we are writing as members of the First United Methodist Church of Eugene and as residents of Lane County who call your district home. We are writing to urge your support of the effort to pass an inclusivity ordinance in Lane County that would protect our undocumented brothers and sisters from the lack of due process when facing detention and deportation. We are asking you to support the adoption of a local ordinance that ensures due process for all residents, and inclusivity ordinance will do just that." And then they point out that they've got -- that other counties in the United States, such as Hennepin County, Minnesota, Chesterfield County, Virginia, Monterey County, California, Travis County, Texas, and others have passed these ordinances. And then there's a signature page of -- of two more pages besides the first page. I just thought that, you know, that's quite a few people that have taken the time to sign this letter, and thought I'd bring it to the attention of the Board.
Thank you, Commissioner Sorensen. Further remonstrances or other issues? Commissioner Bozovic.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Millholland and Ms. Grant, for coming to address the Board. I just wanted to make you aware that last time Alex Kyler presented to the Board about legislative issues, I asked about these specific bills around accessory dwellings and other ways of getting people onto lands out in the rural areas and providing for some needed housing. Both bills basically died in committee this week. So, you know, we have been supportive of them, and -- but it's one of those things where they get to the deadlines, and they're still -- they're not in the right committees now. The only thing that's still alive at this point has to be in rules or ways and means, and they kind of died in the AG Committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Bozovic. Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too appreciate the ladies' comments in regard to this. I need a little clarification, if I may. Did I -- do I understand that churches and religious institutions are allowing or allowed to have overnight camping on their lots?
What Ms. Millholland cited was a county -- from the county code, I believe it is, and it's Section 100, that allows for religious institutions to allow camping -- overnight parking in their parking lot. Doesn't really discuss camping, so it would have to be looked at and see how that pertains to what is in the Eugene ordinance, which I was -- well, I'll talk about that in a moment.
If I may?
Please.
I appreciate the fact that those organizations, churches, and other like-minded spiritual-based organizations, that they are allowed to do that, I believe in the sense of humanity that we are, our brothers keeper, and I believe the people that do that best are the people that are grounded in a spiritual realm, whatever that may be, and so I'm gratified to hear that they are allowed to provide temporary occupancy for individuals. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Liken, then I'll issue my remonstrances and other issues regarding 2938 and 2937. 2938, the recreation vehicle one, was probably dead from the beginning. 2937 was worked throughout the session. In fact, I worked on it through Association of Oregon Counties. We have a housing subcommittee, a subcommittee of the Economic Development Committee, and worked through it, and there were issues that came up predominantly, my understanding is through Thousand Friends of Oregon, which didn't really want to entertain this kind of a -- this kind of a accommodation. Now, 2937, it was auxiliary ADUs, auxiliary dwelling units or additional dwelling units on rural residential and potentially rural farmland. It is dead at this point in time. There will be a task force, I understand, or a work group during the interim that will potentially bring something back for the 2019 legislative session, maybe 2018, but more likely 2019. So that's going to move forward. A couple of county Commissioners, one from Polk County is very interested in this, and so it's something that will continue to be worked through the Association of Oregon Counties and through the legislature. So thank you for your testimony today. You'll hear more on this when we do have an agenda item surrounding this. The other issue that I have is that I had a chance on May 25 to attend what was called the Oregon Legislative Prayer Breakfast. It was an invitation only, and it was a multi-faith prayer breakfast, which included was David Kosak from Neve Shalom, Imam Muhammad Nahib from Muslim Community Center, and also Christian prayers. And there was -- a lot of legislators were there. I think in excess of 40 legislators were there. And what really struck me is that when the legislators were there, they were there as people and not as members of a caucus. It's a rare opportunity when you see legislators working together and agreeing on so many things as I saw that day. In fact, the Speaker of the House, who is Tina Kotek, and Representative Mike McLean, who's the House Republican Leader, spoke together, and they did so arm-in-arm, calling for unity and calling for working together to do the right things in the legislature. Now, I'm going to -- I'm going to liken that to the House Lounge. I was a member of the House of Representatives, and in the House, on the fourth floor, there's a lounge where only Representatives are allowed to go. And when you're in that lounge, you don't talk about what happens on the House floor, and you don't talk about what happens in the caucus room. And what happens is you build alliances, that is to say, an alliances, a union formed for mutual benefit. You talk about mutual benefit in that lounge, and that was what was happening at the prayer breakfast in Salem, is we were talking, everyone was talking about alliances for mutual benefit. Now, here's the problem. The moment you step out of the House Lounge, the moment you stepped out, the people stepped out of the hallway in the Salem Convention Center, it moved away from alliances to allegiances. And you put an EG in the word alliance, and all of a sudden you have a very, very different thing. An alliance is a union formed for mutual benefit. An allegiance is a loyalty or commitment of a subordinate to a group. Alliances are about association and union. Allegiances are about obedience. And as a caucus member, when I was in Salem, when you're in the caucus room, you really end up talking more about allegiance and less about alliance. And that's the problem that we have in government quite frequently, is that we fail to work on our allegiance -- alliances and end up working on allegiances. That is to say, we fail to work on the mutual benefit, and we work for the benefit of the group that we are associated with. I'd like to be able to do away with that, and I'd like to call on Speaker Kotek and Republican Leader Mike McLean to do away with that, to do away with allegiances, and let's work on alliances. Let's do what is right, rather than what is right for our group, what is right in the caucus room. And that's really something that we all need to dwell on. How do we take the EG out of the word allegiance? Just take the EG out of the middle, and all of a sudden you have an alliance, and let's have alliances. Thank you. Any further remonstrances? Commissioner Liken.
Real quickly, Chair Farr, this just reminds me, my grandfather's in the legislature back in the '60s, and the lounge was called the bar, two-story. And there were no caucuses, which I think is very interesting. So I think you bring up a very important piece, alliance allegiance. There were no caucuses back in the day. And in fact, the southern Oregon, what I would call the southern Oregon timber counties, formed an enormous coalition that really was, at that time, more powerful than the Portland Coalition. Think about that for a moment. We haven't seen that in a long time. But one of my -- the funniest stories that my grandfather ever told me is that the community college system that we see today was carved out on a napkin in a bar. How's that? My legislative leaders, and my grandfather was on Ways and Means at that time, and so -- and being from Douglas County, where Uncoal Community College was going to go, this is really how so many things were done. And it was pretty amazing, if you think about that. But I like what you said, alliances and not allegiances, because that's exactly what was formed, were alliances. And so it was pretty amazing back then. And if you think about it, he only served in the State House for eight years, but if you look from 1961 to 1969 and look at the enormous accomplishments made in Oregon, it's pretty stunning. And so I'm -- that's a really -- I thought that was fantastic, Chair Farr. You're exactly right. And in fact, I wish our folks in Salem and our folks in DC would understand that much more, because isn't it interesting how county Commissioners seem to understand that? And it doesn't matter if you have an R or D next to your name. It's amazing what kind of coalitions you build around the state and to get things done and moving forward. So great, great lesson, and I really appreciate that very, very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Liken. I will point out that in 2013, the Senate had a 15-15 split. That was the most productive Senate I've ever seen. And then four years later, the House had a 30-30 split, when Arne Roblin and Bruce Hannah were the co-speakers of the House, most productive House session we've ever had. So 30-30 is real good.
I'll just --
Commissioner Sorensen.
Yeah, I just want to add something about the legislature. The House and Senate in the Oregon Legislature have these kind of rooms called the lounges, and they're really more like, they're really more like, you know, like restaurants or almost like a diner. And there's -- the food is brought in in the noon, and you pay a fee to eat there. Most legislators do pay the fee to eat there. I did. And they bring the food in, and then you kind of, it's a self-serve thing, you walk through the line and kind of put your food on the plate. What is interesting about it is that it is not separated by geography or by political party, that people just gather at these tables. And you might think, as a citizen, well, who cares what, how they eat, or what they eat, or where they eat. But what I think is being pointed out here is that this is a mixing opportunity that's very rare in American political, you know, politics. And this mixing allows people to come up with ideas and work through compromise and discuss issues. And that doesn't really exist much in other aspects of American politics, particularly at other legislators or in the Congress. And so, you know, this is an important part of trying to build public policy in a positive way, and we don't really see that too often in other places, so I do appreciate. And for me, as a former senator, it is an opportunity to talk with people from completely different backgrounds. And so I'm sitting there talking with, you know, maybe Senator Miller, who at the time was the Chair of the Republican Party of Oregon, or maybe a senator from Burns that's a distributor, beer distributor in eastern Oregon. And I'm not really going to have this opportunity very often in the rest of my life as a Democratic senator from a very urban population in Eugene. And so I would imagine that Randy Miller, the Chair of the Oregon Republican Party, didn't have many opportunities to talk to people like me either, so I think it was a positive thing all around.
Thank you, Commissioner Sorensen. He came back as a representative later and served with me. Commissioner Sorensen was a senator. I was a representative. Mr. Mokraski, I'm going to point out something, and this is not really tongue-in-cheek. The House Lounge was much nicer than the Senate Lounge. So we prepared the food for the Senate Lounge, by the way. Okay, then we'll move along to emergency business. Commissioner Bozovic.
Yeah, sorry, I should have made note of this under adjustments to agenda, but we do have one piece of emergency business we need to deal with fairly quickly, and that is when we were trying to fix some of the Board assignments a couple weeks ago after appointing Counselor, I mean Commissioner Williams, we kind of messed up and forgot to appoint somebody to the Forest Management Subcommittee of AOC's Public Lands and all that. So no, I was thinking, it either -- you know, I'm easy about that, but if we could do that fairly quickly by motion, I think that Diana can get us a Board Order on Consent Calendar next week that formalizes that. But so I -- either way, I don't know if you want -- the only unfortunate thing is a lot of times Public Lands meets when I'm sitting on other committees, so that's the only reason why I was thinking it might be -- does it conflict with transportation, though?
No.
Okay. So we could use a motion, then, to direct the Administrator to prepare an order to make that fix? Do you need a motion for that, Steve, Mr. Mokraski? It's just a slight fix to the --
I don't think -- yeah, if we're going to bring back a Board Order to correct it, then just head nods is fine.
Okay. Then we'll look for the Board Order in a subsequent agenda, then. Okay.
I'm sorry, I missed who was going to --
It's Commissioner Liken. We'll fill that blank. Excellent. Then we'll move along to our consent calendar. We have before is a consent calendar for June 6, 2017, excuse me. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, move approval.
Second.
Moved in second of the consent calendar, by the way, is our items that are considered routine and will be enacted by a single motion, which you have just heard. We have a motion and a second. Moved by Commissioner Liken, seconded by Commissioner Bozovic. Discussion to the motion. I see none. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Then, Mr. Mokraski, we'll move along to Assessment and Taxation, Order 17-06-06-05, and I believe that Assessor Coles is with us this morning. Mr. Coles.
Good morning, Chair Commissioners. I'm here today for re-submission of the 2017-18 CAFA grant with Oregon Department Revenue for Assessment Taxations yearly grant funds. This year, the Oregon Department Revenue had new review teams that pretty much reviewed the CAFA grant requests in a different light in the past, I guess the way to say it. It was a very frustrating process, quite frankly. Up until last week, we were still working on eligible expenses for the CAFA grant. In fact, the -- up until last week, we were looking at about a $52,000 loss in grant funds as previously approved by the Board back in April. And luckily, I was able to work with the upper directors of the Department Revenue to include expenses that were previously excluded with staff at Department Revenue. And the final grant request is about $28,000 in eligible expenses less, which equates to about $4,600 in grant funds, so it's not insignificant, but it's much less of an impact than the original Oregon Department Revenue review of the CAFA grant.
So it's not good news, but it's less bad news.
Exactly. And I -- it's pretty much the -- I just wanted to emphasize again, it was, this year was a very frustrating process. This is the fourth year that I've done the CAFA grant process, and it's probably been the most frustrating of all the four years.
Thank you, Mr. Coles. Any questions or comments from Mr. Coles? Then we have before is Order 17-06-06-05. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move approval of Order 17-06-06-05 in the matter of reapproving submission of the County Assessment Function Funding Assistance CAFA Grant application with revisions to the Oregon Department of Revenue for FY 1718.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Liken, seconded by Commissioner Bozovic. Discussion to the motion. I see none. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Coles. Moving along to Item 7, which is Public Works, Order 17-06-06-06, and I'll turn this over to Mr. Mokraski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Lydia McKinney and Amber Beller here. Diana Jones is also in the audience to answer any questions you may have. I'll just make a couple brief comments to set the overall context for what you're looking at today. We have, over the past year and a half, we've embarked on an effort to review and update the entire Lane Manual. This, to our knowledge, has never been done before. It's been done in bits and pieces. So what you're going to see here, we've been working with our departments, with committees, and various individuals across the organization, the community, as appropriate to update these sections. So you have Chapter 3 in front of you. Amber's going to talk in a little greater detail about some of the substantive changes that are being made or being recommended to you as it relates to the Planning Commission bylaws. And then I will just say there are some other changes in here that are, I think, mostly non-substantive and affect language related to various departments. For example, we used to have the Department of Management Services, and Lane Manual refers to the Department of Management Services. We no longer have that department. We now have a division within county administration called Operations, so we're changing some of that language. There's some cleanup related to committees and requirements for reporting and documentation and membership of committees and those types of things. So happy to answer questions if you have those, and Ms. Jones would be the person to dig into some of the details not related to the Planning Commission, and I'll turn it over to Amber to go through that. And then just finally say that you'll see these periodically come before you, various chapters, and we'll provide overviews, but just understand that it's part of a broader effort that we've undertaken that is really significant to really clean up all of Lane Manual.
Thank you, Ms. Mokraski. Welcome, Ms. Bell, Ms. McKinney. Welcome, Ms. Bell, Ms. McKinney.
Thank you. Good mornings. As Mr. Mokrhaisky mentioned, the Land Management Division is proposing an amendment to Lane Manual, Chapter 3, specifically to update the coastal geographic requirements for Planning Commission membership, and also concurrent ratification of amendments to the Lane County Planning Commission bylaws. Specifically, the proposed amendments would reduce the number of coastal memberships from two to one, with the remaining membership being a required membership, the person would need to reside in the coastal area of Lane County. In addition to those amendments, the amendments include a new requirement that a reasonable attempt will be made to select the voting membership from different geographic areas of the county. And in part, the idea behind that addition is to supplement the reduction in coastal memberships. As you may recall, Land Management Division met with the Board in February of this year, and we discussed an appointment for an at-large position for which there was two finalists. And the Board provided some direction to staff to evaluate amendments to the coastal geographic requirements and also express interest in appointing Mr. Stephen Dignam, should the amendments to the coastal geographic requirements be adopted. And partly, that, the intent, I believe, is that Lane Manag, Land, excuse me, Land Management Division has experienced some difficulty in filling the coastal positions, specifically between the advertising period of fall 2015 through winter 2017. Based on the Board's direction, staff drafted amendments to the Planning Commission geographic requirements and presented the revised language to the Planning Commission on April 18th. They made some minor modification to the language and unanimously approved the amended language to their bylaws. And those minor modifications are reflected in the language that's before you in your packet. In addition to the Planning Commission geographic requirement amendments, Land Management Division proposes an amendment to the Lane Manual requirement that the Planning Commission complete its action within 60 days of filing of an application. And the intent of that is to accurately reflect timelines of Lane Code and state law. As fully described in your Agenda cover memo, staff finds that the proposal is consistent with state statutes, Lane Manual, Lane County Planning Commission bylaws, and the Administrative Procedures Manual. And for that reason, recommend that the Board approve the order adopting Lane Manual, Chapter 3, and Lane County Planning Commission bylaws amendments as proposed.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Very good. And I'll point out that while Lane County is the largest of all Oregon's coastal counties in population, in fact, Lane County has more population than all other coastal counties combined, less than 5% of the population live within 20 miles of the coast. So it's understandably difficult to recruit from relatively small population to positions for the Planning Commission. Commissioner Bozovic.
Thank you. And I appreciate this, coming back to the Board for consideration. Obviously, the cleanup items are not very controversial in Chapter 3, but this is, this has some history behind it. The reason, the whole reason the Planning Commission had two coastal members in it was there used to be two Planning Commissions in Lane County. There was a West Lane Planning Commission that had a geographic region as described in, in the coastal membership. And then there was a Lane County Planning Commission that dealt with the whole rest of the county. And the reason that was done way back when was there was a completely, four pieces of the statewide planning goals that only apply to the coast. The last four planning goals are coastal goals. So there really wasn't a need to deal with those in all of Lane County. So there was kind of this division in some ways. And ultimately, it was determined a long time ago that to combine these two, but to try and maintain that, that presence and honor the people in the West Lane area for, for their significant differences, their, the two membership spots were held open. Since I've been a Commissioner, I have, I think I've recruited three or four people into those positions, and the average length of stay is less than a year, once you get somebody into them, because it is quite a commitment. It's one of our most time-consuming volunteer positions in Lane County, even more time-consuming than the Budget Committee, because they meet at least once a month, sometimes twice a month, you know, more often than that, twice, sometimes three. They get background reading that can be hundreds of pages, and they have to start understanding land use laws and all sorts of things. And if you're living in Florence or Dune City, it's pretty significant to come over two or three times a month in the wintertime. That's usually when we lose our West Lane membership. So, I appreciate this change. It's sad we have to do this, but I understand how difficult. It's more important for us to have a full Planning Commission, I think. And we have an opportunity right now to get back to a full Planning Commission, because that's really, having those citizens involved in doing that, that citizen, that's our citizen involvement. Getting it fully, you know, fully, you know, staffed with citizens is about having that citizen's voice in the land use process here in Lane County. So, I appreciate the work staff's done, and I support the changes to the bylaws.
Thank you for that historical context, Commissioner Bozovic. Any further discussion? I understand this, this is not just that item, this is also a housekeeping. Is there anything of significance that needs to be mentioned regarding the house, housekeeping, excuse me? So, just minor adjustments, outdated language, et cetera? Okay? Very good. I see no further discussion. We have before is Item 17-06-06-06. Do I have a motion?
So, I'll move approval of the order.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Bozovic and seconded by Commissioner Liken. Any discussion to the motion? I see none. Then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Bell. Thank you, Ms. McKinney.
Thank you.
And thank you, Ms. Jones, for being here this morning. Moving along to Item 8, Order 17-06-06-07. And before we get into this, I'd like to mention, I apologize for not mentioning sooner, Sheriff Trapp has joined us in, in the audience today. Welcome, Sheriff Trapp. I, I didn't see you come in. I saw you sitting there. I apologize for not mentioning when you first stepped into the room. Order 17-06-06-07 in the matter of approving the tentative agreement between Lane County and the Lane County Peace Officers Association. And this morning, we have Inga Anrud, Andrea Nagels, welcome, and Mary Miller, welcome.
Welcome. Thank, uh, thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Today, I will be co-presenting with Mary Miller and Inga Anrud. They were both bargaining team members for the county for this round of negotiations with LCPOA. We have submitted a board packet that contains the summary for the tentative agreement reached for the labor contract for the negotiations between the county and the Lane County Peace Officers Association. We won't go today into all the details that are contained in the packet. There's a full red line of the contract in addition to a summary of the language changes that the parties agreed to. Although if there are questions, we are happy to answer any questions from the Board. Mary is going to provide a quick, high-level summary of some of the insurance changes that we were able to reach. I will mention, before she goes into that information, that the agreement is for a three-year contract, and it begins July 1, 2016, and it continues through June 30 of 2019.
Right. Thank you, Chair Farr and Commissioners. I'd like to go over the insurance changes that the bargaining team was able to reach agreement with the association's team. Effective, effective January 1, 2018, a new health plan called the Prime Plus Plan will become available for LCPOA employees. This will be in addition to the copay plan and the high-deductible plan. Also effective January 1, 2018, all LCPOA members will begin paying a monthly health insurance contribution towards their insurance plan. The costs are as follows. Employees that are on the copay plan will contribute $50 a month for employee-only and $70 a month for family enrollment. Employees choosing the Prime Plus Plan will contribute $30 a month for employee-only and $50 a month for family enrollment. And employees on the high-deductible health plan will pay $20 a month across the board. The TA also includes some health plan design changes. So effective 1-1 to 2018, the office visit copay amount will increase to $35 per visit. It's currently $25 per visit. And then to promote employee wellness, all employees that are contributing to their health insurance can complete a voluntary LiveWell health risk assessment and biometric screening, and also a comprehensive health review that would be offered through the county's healthcare clinic, the LiveWell Center. And employees who complete the assessment will receive a $20 monthly credit towards the employees' health insurance contributions. Overall, the health insurance changes are in line with the county's priorities of a safe and healthy workforce and focus on employee wellness.
The agreement, in addition to the insurance changes, also provides some adjustments to wages and cost of living. So there's a 2% cost of living adjustment built into the agreement for each year of the three-year contract that will be effective July 1 of 2016, 17, and 2018. To address market competitiveness, the tentative agreement provides a step reconfiguration for certain classifications within the unit, and those are the classifications of Deputy Sheriff, Communications Specialist, and Communications Officer. Those classifications, when we were looking at where they fall within market under a total compensation analysis, were showing that they were behind market with our comparator counties. Also effective July 1 of fiscal year 2016, 17, the current classifications of Communications Officer 1 and 2, and Facility Security Officer 1 and 2 will merge into the single classifications of Communication Officer and Facility Security Officer. The total cost of the contract is, there's information on that contained in the packet. Over the three years of the contract, it's estimated at $3.67 million for all funds, with the majority of expense occurring in the general fund. Other impacted funds include the local option levy fund, the Sheriff's Office Special Revenue Fund, and the Health and Human Services Special Revenue Fund. And LCPOA members have voted to ratify the tentative agreement. I will point out that the tentative agreement is the result of very hard work between the county's bargaining team and the association's bargaining team. And we believe that the tentative agreement fairly recognizes the exceptional service of the employees within the Sheriff's Office. I'll open it up to other comments from my co-presenters, if any.
I just want to comment that we were really excited to get this agreement with LCPOA. As all of you know, this is now the fifth association slash union here at the county that we have gotten to agree to the health insurance changes and the contributions to the health insurance. And we really believe that this will help contribute to those wellness goals that we have for employees and cost containment for how, how high our health insurance costs come in. So we're really excited for that and really appreciative that LCPOA, along with prosecuting attorneys, FAPo 626, Admin Pro, have all agreed to these changes.
Excellent. Thank you for the presentation. This is pretty exciting. You say you're excited to reach this agreement. I'm excited also. It took a lot of hard work, and I'd like to point out the work that you have done throughout the process. And really, Sheriff Trapp or whomever can pass along to the association the appreciation that I personally have for the work that they did to, to reach an agreement. That really is a, a kind of a milestone agreement. So, very well done. I'll open this to questions from the Commission. Questions, Commissioner Liken.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And no, no questions. But again, I want to say thank you very much to the bargaining, our bargaining team, and, and a job well done. And I'll just make one, one statement, and that is, even with the, I think with the fifth bargaining unit agreeing to our, to the healthcare plan, I'd like to remind folks that the Lane County Healthcare Plan is a BMW 700 series compared to the private sector. So, I got to tell you, it's a great, great healthcare plan. And I think that all of our bargaining units need to remember, if they're in the private sector, it wouldn't be close. So I, I do appreciate not only your work, but the efforts, of course, of our, of the, of the union as well, agreeing to this. And it's still an outstanding, outstanding plan. And, but again, thank you very much. Job well done.
Thank you, Commissioner Liken. Further discussion, Commissioner Bozovic?
Thank you. I just want to tag on to that, the comments about the, the health insurance a little bit. It's, you know, getting to these five agreements so far is part of what our team here in, in human services, I mean, human resources and our administration, finance folks have done. That has, you know, in Budget Committee, we noted, for the third year running, we are, we are projecting a zero growth in our health insurance costs. You know, that, that's a pretty amazing fact. And, and one of the reasons we've gotten to that is with the cooperation of our collective bargaining units. And it started way back with the 626 and Admin Pro folks agreeing to get to two common plans that we ultimately got all the bargaining units to, and those units agreeing to those. And then ultimately, now we're getting into kind of adding a third plan and, and getting agreement to start sharing some of the premium costs. You know, it's, it's been a great working relationship, and, and I have to commend our bargaining team. I also have to commend the wellness folks. I mean, we got some criticism when we first opened our employee health clinic from the public, you know, that it was this special thing for government employees. What we were trying to explain to folks was how much money that would actually save Lane County, because it lowers our experience rating and also deals with managing health versus, you know, treating. You know, there's a whole big difference in how much less it costs to manage somebody's health than it does to treat illness. And, and that, that was really an important step. And you guys have been all involved in that in some way that are sitting here at the table. But also, our bargaining units have been involved in agreeing to do all this and make some of these very innovative changes. I'd also like to kind of take a note about the step changes. You kind of glazed over those a little bit. But specifically about those step changes was about entry level and our competitiveness in, in the entry level. That's where we found we were way behind in market. And what we did in some of these changes was to try and make our entry level positions competitive. And as we're seeing the silver wave of retirements in law enforcement for this unit in particular, being competitive on the entry level is really important for the sheriff to, to recruit folks and, and replace those folks that are retiring, in addition to fully staffing what the, the levy has funded. So I really appreciate the agreement, the willingness of LCPOA to work with us on those specific issues, controlling our healthcare costs, and dealing with our competitiveness at the entry level. So, job well done to the bargaining team and job well done to LCPOA.
Thank you, Commissioner Bozovic. Further discussion? I see none. You know, earlier in the meeting, I talked about allegiances and alliances. And if you look at the word alliance, if you look up synonyms, one of the synonyms is association, another one is union. So this is a demonstration of working together for, let's see, for a mutual benefit. And that's, that's what culminates in an agreement such of discourse, such as this. And it's called tentative. At what point will it become not tentative?
So it has been voted on and approved by the association. So today, we are recommending that the Board approve the tentative agreement, and with that approval, it will become a final agreement that can be implemented.
Perfect. Then we have before is Order 17-06-06-07. Do I have a motion? Commissioner Bozovic?
So, I'll move approval of the order in the matter of approving the tentative agreement between Lane County and the Lane County Peace Officers Association.
Second. Moved and seconded. Moved by Commissioner Bozovic, seconded by Commissioner Liken. Discussion to the motion? I see none. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. And thank you, Ms. Edwards. I see you in the back of the room for, for being a part of the effort of moving this forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Then we will move along to county administration. Mr. Mokrhaisky, do you have any announcements?
Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to hold on the announcements, and if you want to move to county council and do the Item 10B, since we have some folks here waiting for that one.
Perfect. Then we will move along to 10B and come back to 9A and 10A. 10B is a discussion, review of poverty and homelessness board strategies, including the Eugene Camping Ordinance. Today, we have Mr. Manella, Steve Manella, and Steve Dingle with us. And just very briefly, regarding the Eugene ordinance, we, it's, just, it talks about the Eugene Camping Ordinance. That is ordinance number 4.816, which was enacted on August 5, 1998 initially. It was amended on July 10, 2002. Both of those dates are when I was on the Eugene City Council. I was the Chair of the committee, which was the Council Committee on Poverty and Homelessness, that wrote those two ordinances, the ordinance and the amendment to that ordinance. And it was a lengthy process. It was a committee that included Jim Torrey, and me, and Bobby Lee, numerous staff from both... both counties. The county was involved, and city were involved in that. Broad sweeping and groundbreaking was ordinance number 4.816. Ms. Mokrhyuski, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And if it's all right with you, what we thought we'd do here today is, we have Steve Manella from our Human Services Division. I'd like Steve to give a little bit of an overview, and in the, in your materials today and posted online, you have the poverty and homelessness strategic plan. So I wanted Steve to provide a brief overview of that broader context of what we have been doing Lane County in partnership with the City of Eugene, City of Springfield, and many organizations, nonprofit, faith-based, and private organizations in the community to tackle the challenge of poverty and homelessness. So Steve will set that broader context, so we understand, first, the strategies and goals that we're pursuing, both with emergency shelter, with supportive housing, and other efforts. Mr. Dingle is here to provide for you a brief overview of his memo that's also in your packet, and that talks about what would be involved in amending the existing code to allow for language similar to the Eugene camping ordinance. And then I've asked Ms. McKinney from Land Management to sit up here to answer any questions, because there were some comments made this morning from the two public comments speakers about the existing county code that deals with faith-based, car camping at faith-based institutions. So hopefully, we can tackle all these questions in a reasonable amount of time.
Thank you, Ms. Mokrhyuski. And Mr. Manella, before you begin with your presentation, I'd like to point out that we, I acquiesce that it would be difficult for us to emulate Eugene ordinance 4.816. There are elements in that that would be difficult for the county to accomplish, even inside the urban growth boundary. My question is, and this is the one that I'll be looking for answers at some point in the not-too-distant future, is what can we do? What elements of that ordinance potentially can we use in the county? Mr. Manella?
Yes. Very pleased to be here this morning. The County Poverty and Homelessness Board has a broad range of strategies that Commissioner Farr and Commissioner Bozovic, by participating both in the Poverty and Homelessness Board and the Human Services Commission, have been involved with supporting over the past several years. So there are two major elements to our plan that have to do with shelter and supportive housing. The first piece is, we have a goal of developing 600 units of supportive housing over the next five years, and I'm pleased to say that we'll be coming back in August with an update on the first project, which is a 50-unit supportive housing project that we've been here to the board before about, at MLK. And then the second project that we're working on will be for families in recovery, another 50-unit project. And that's part of a larger architecture of working with the City of Eugene and City of Springfield and the private sector over the next five years. And we're looking towards a summit sometime in the fall to bring in the private sector and get additional participation for that. The other thing that's substantial that we have done is, we have added 120 beds of seasonal shelter through the Dust of Dawn program, and I want to thank the board members and the Budget Committee, Lane County, for continuing to support that effort. And overall, the broader context of the plan is that anyone who seeks to be indoors and sheltered can have a place that they can call home. Finally, we have some special projects. We have a frequent user service engagement project, and I'm pleased to say that we're continuing that into the next year. We had a pilot project this year with 10 people, and we have participation from all the public safety organizations and all the healthcare organizations in the community. So finally, it is those broader partnerships, the healthcare organizations, the public safety organizations, and the private sector, and then our work with the 2021 Games that ultimately is going to provide some support towards achieving our outcomes.
Thank you, Mr. Manella. A great, brief presentation, based upon the long history that you have. I first met you in 1995, when Mayor, then Mayor Ruth Baskin appointed me to the Human Services Commission. And I thought, who is this guy? Because all of the things that you had done up to that point in time, including FQHCs and some of the other things that you personally have been, been a groundbreaker on. So thank you for your work throughout all of these years, Mr. Manella, and thank you for that relatively short presentation. Questions or comments? Commissioner Sorenson?
Well, I'm just interested, because I'm the person that said we should have this come back, I'm just interested in knowing what we can do to basically answer yes to the citizen concerns that were brought up. That's the reason we're here, is Mr. Dingle made your report, which I appreciate, and I think it was fairly narrowly crafted. It pointed out that you've done everything that the board asked you to do, but I'm more interested in what is the board going to do, and what staff, whether it's Lydia, or Steve, or Steve, or Steve, what are we going to do here to advance this concern? Are we going to have this report, and then it will end? And then we've had our report, which was our request, that we have this report? Or are we going to do more? So I'd just like to hear, what are we going to do that's going to reduce the number of homeless people? What are we going to do to answer affirmatively the citizen requests?
I'll use that as a jumping off point, Commissioner Sorenson. The purpose of, the purpose of the memorandum that I prepared for the board dated May 19, 2017, was simply to point out, because of the unique nature of that piece of real estate that's under consideration, all of the different pieces that go into it. And so doing something that seems to folks who are not familiar with the process, as simple as making these changes involves a lot of, a lot of potential work. And so that, that was really all that I was doing there. I think Ms. McKinney can talk, speak to perhaps some other things that are available now, but the, but it depends on how far the board wants to go in terms of how much, how many changes you would like to make.
Thank you, Mr. Dingle. Then I'll state this before you start, Ms. McKinney. The Eugene ordinance, the municipal code section, there are three main provisions in that. There's a lot of language in this, but three main provisions. One, I'll quote, is, "A person may sleep overnight in a vehicle camper or trailer in a parking lot of a religious institution, place of worship, business, or public entity." That's one. So a business or a church. The second is, persons may sleep overnight in the backyard of a single-family residence, so on residential property. So churches, basically churches and businesses, residential property. And the third is, on a paved or gravel surface located on a vacant or unoccupied parcel. So three very different things. One is religious and business, one is residential, and one is vacant properties. So Ms. McKinney?
Thank you, Commissioners. So I wasn't really prepared to go into a detail of what we can do. What I did want to talk about are a couple of things. I think we get the message, or I certainly do, in terms of what the board is looking for, and that's some ideas and some strategies.
And Ms. McKinney, we will be back on August 1st, and potentially, we'll talk more about it at that point. So this is a report, more than an action item. Thank you, Ms. McKinney, for that.
Thank you. Just, I would note very quickly with regards to the comments this morning, that language that was read from Chapter 11 is the kind of language that we would need. We actually have that. That's our building code section, so that speaks to the building code requirements. What that doesn't speak to is the land use requirements, and I think that's what Steve Dingle was getting at, which is, in order for us to do changes to the Eugene UT code, we'd have to do a code update with the City of Eugene. So, you know, like Steve was saying, it's not a matter of just sitting down and knowing what the right language is and inserting it into the code. It's a matter of inserting it into some section of the code. We wouldn't be quite sure where and how. But then having a public, you know, public involvement is very important in planning, so that's the first thing we would start doing, is a public involvement plan, because we would have to go out and do public outreach on that. That, because of the amount of work it takes to do that kind of, you know, when we're bringing, doing code changes, which currently the division is working on 13, 14, and 16, what we look for are opportunities to kind of batch things together. We've been talking about some stormwater issues for a long time with roads and elsewhere, and two projects are now becoming one, so we can be more efficient. So I think something that we could look at is, what are the opportunities? I mean, I think there really are some huge hurdles in lane code. And remember, too, that a city code is different than a county code, so a city's an urban area, and it's written for an urban area. Our code is written for what we do, which is primarily to protect farm and forest land. So we, we don't have the same base structure that the City of Eugene does. They don't have any farm and forest to protect. They're, they're an urban area. And so again, I think that's where people can say, and I can say it too, that here's a parcel, the property owner says yes, you know, what's the problem? And the problem is, is that legally, we just can't authorize people to use the land for a residential use when our entire code system and rural comprehensive plan says otherwise. So again, from a legal perspective, in order for us to feel confident that we can tell people, yes, this can happen, we would have to make all of those code and rural comprehensive plan changes.
Thank you, Ms. McKinney. And I'm going to leap in with a couple of questions and comments surrounding that. While Lane County code does cover a seat ahead to the top of the Three Sisters, there's also a chunk of Lane County that's inside of urban growth boundaries, but not inside of cities. Ultimately, much of that will be inside of cities, we would presume, at some point down the road as annexation occurs. And right now, you know, there are a couple of significant areas, one being River Road, Santa Clara, but that's not the only one, where we're actually inside an urban growth boundary. And Ms. Mokrhyuski, you and I have talked quite a bit about the struggles of people living in the county, not in a city, but in an urban environment. So there are many, many issues that come up when you live basically in a city, but you're not in a city. This is not like living in Deadwood. You know, this is, you're living in Eugene, you know? And so everything, the streets kind of look like Eugene streets, other than they don't have sidewalks, but the residences, the traffic flow, the people who go to work from these areas basically do the same thing as the people sometimes directly across the street. So as we look at updating codes, we're not necessarily, I would like to look at not necessarily updating codes for the entire county, but gear it toward inside of urban growth boundaries, which are prescribed as something very different to, you know, the rural residential, the rural farmland, the forest and agricultural, and outside of urban growth boundaries. They're almost exclusively zoned something different than agricultural, so.
And if I just may, the challenge again with that, because we understand the direction in terms of looking at within the city, but then again, that, it still requires, we do that jointly with the City of Eugene, initiate a code and plan amendment, and then we amend Eugene's UT code in order to do so.
Okay. And since Eugene's amendment, I would foresee that being a, maybe a timely, a time-consuming project, but something that wouldn't be adversarial at any point. The other discussion surrounding that is that we do have history regarding how that occurred in the City of Eugene. It occurred between 1997 and 2002 was when the discussions occurred, and we actually have a staff member who was, who was involved in those discussions. That's Pearl Wolf, who I believe at the time, Mr. Manella was working with, with Looking Glass before she came to work for the county. So we have a lot of history involved in how that worked and how it happened. So we're not, it's not a mystery. You know, it's not something that is, that is undoable, let's say. Commissioner Liken?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And so Lydia, I appreciate you kind of putting this in context regarding our lane code and what we do as far as the county's concerned. I kind of view this as a pilot, and I, and I think that's hopefully how we're going to see this. And this is probably why I would suggest that we don't rush into other jurisdictions. There's, there seems to be an interest, and I'm looking at, in particular, Commissioner Farr, Chair Farr, and Commissioner Sorenson, are Eugene commissioners. And of course, Commissioner Bozovic has part of that, that area as well. I think, instead of rushing into other jurisdictions, I really like this idea and kind of taking a look at how this will work within the, within Eugene, and in that, that land that Chair Farr talked about, that is in the, within the UGB, but still, it's county property. I can't see this really working yet, Liken, say in Glenwood, because right now, they're undergoing a major change, especially on the Franklin corridor. So that's, that's, that's changing. The planning jurisdiction is all under the City of Springfield. Even though much of that is still within Lane County, the city has planning jurisdiction. So I like this to kind of focus on these areas within Eugene, or working with the City of Eugene on this, but also seeing how this will work. Because if this works, then maybe we can take a look at other jurisdictions, whether it's Springfield, we can, we can communicate with them, down to Cottage Grove, if that's a possibility, or other communities. But so I, so I'm viewing this more as a pilot, and I don't know if you have it in kind of the same context, because I think you outlined it pretty well, what, you know, what's in our code and how we, how we manage as far as, as far as land use is concerned. So I don't know if you want to comment on that or not, but I appreciate it.
I will briefly, thank you, Commissioner Liken. As you mentioned, in Springfield, Springfield administers the code in Springfield, which they just have one for land that is or is not annexed. I want to remind the board that Eugene does the same thing. We don't issue permits for the City of Eugene. We, like we did in Springfield, we gave the jurisdiction. What I would recommend is that looking at a code change be the last thing we do, because code changes are by their nature complex, they are controversial, not everyone will like the idea of what we're trying to do, because it might have some impact in their neighborhoods. So there are different sides to the story. What I think, and I haven't really been involved in these discussions in a lot of depth yet, but I think looking at the alternatives, are there additional ways that we could do that? We did quickly look at, oh, can we just do an IGA with the City of Eugene? Because then we wouldn't have to do code changes, and that would be something where the board could give staff direction relatively easily. But then again, unfortunately, as we discussed at length when we were looking at the PAC-TAC issue that Bill Close brought to us, there's, there's just a whole lot of issues to address in a code. So again, what can we look at? What other tools might we have? And maybe a code change is, is one of the things that we want to look at, and, but I think starting to really evaluate what are the best options for, for us to be able to achieve what the board is asking.
Thank you. Commissioner Liken, follow up?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So before we, I would, I would caution that piece of it, as far as a code change. That's why I'm suggesting that we view this as a pilot. And I would, and I'm, I'm just looking at the board, kind of, because this is an area that's, there's, there's interest. You know, there seems to be interest on, within that area of the City of Eugene. We obviously have folks here that have, that have come and testified, and are very passionate about it. And, and there's interest, of course, with, when I'm hearing from Chair Farr, from Commissioner Sorenson, and Commissioner Bozovic, there's an interest in maybe taking a look at this. So that's why I think we really need to view this as a pilot, for that very reason, to see if this will work, and, and how it works into the future. And because, once you initiate that code change, it's for all of Lane County, and whether, and we may, we may run into areas where all of a sudden, maybe there's a pushback, but yet we have a code change in place, and how would that work? And, and making sure that communication's in place. So that's why I'm suggesting we view this as a pilot in moving forward. I think it's a great idea, personally. I really do, and I, and I really appreciate the, I appreciate you coming and talking to us, not only, not just once, but a couple times, and I think, and your emails and so on and so forth. I think it's important, and so I appreciate that. But, but because land use in counties are just so, they're, they're different than, than cities, and how we manage things, that's why I suggest we focus this more as a pilot moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you for the great comments, Commissioner Liken. And just one thing before I go, move to Commissioner Bozovic. It's great to see human services and land use sitting at the same table, because so often, in our strict adherence to land use laws... same table. Because so often, in our strict adherence to land use laws, which we're required to do by the state and by other, other agencies, the human, the humans are the casualties quite often. And that's what we all want to avoid, is the humans being casualties of strict land use code adherence, which we are required to do. So wherever we can, I would push for making certain that, for instance, a kid who gets up in the morning, living in a travel trailer and goes to school, goes to high school, doesn't have to wonder where his travel trailer is going to be tonight, when he goes home to sleep and go to, back to school in the morning. And so if we're, when we're looking at particularly inside of urban growth boundaries, where all the kids go to the same schools, where all the parents use the same roads, where all of the other amenities are pretty, they go shop at the same stores, why can't these kids have the same kind of security that kids who live inside the city have? And that's why I'm pushing for is to find a way to make this happen. If it does involve a code change, well, let's see how that happens. If it doesn't involve a code change, if it can be a pilot program, let's see how that can happen. But let's, let's work on the human side of things while being bound, as we are, to adhere to land use codes. Commissioner Bozovich.
Thank you. And I appreciate the discussion. I understand how complex when this was first proposed. And one of my responses back to the people that were bringing it forward was this isn't just as simple as adopting city code, because there is that whole issue of our rural comprehensive plan, and the differences between city zoning and county zoning and all. But I want to go focus more closely on Chapter 11 of the code, Section 100. And that portion of our code is specifically about buildings, you know, the whole, that, that section. And then 11-100 is specifically about mobile homes and RVs. And then the section four of that is specifically about permitted temporary overnight camping at religious institutions. So, you know, it gets very specific there. And we, you know, provide for up to three vehicles, we have all sorts of, some conditioning on that, you know, the sanitary facilities that are required to be provided, et cetera. And, and, you know, a clear statement that, you know, if the institution can't charge a fee for doing so, so it can't be a commercial enterprise. Looking at that piece of code alone, I'm kind of wondering if amending that to include commercial businesses and public entities, as, as was described earlier, whether that brings in the whole rural comp plan and all that. So I guess my, my question, I expect it off the cuff answer, because it's a legal question, is would that change actually require going through a comp plan amendment, or is it just a code amendment to add that language? So, because if it's simply a code amendment, it seems like something fairly easily to be done. And I was trying to go back to the, the last time this section was amended and find that, that ordinance and see what they were doing with amending it, and whether that included a comp plan change. But I haven't been able to get back to that 2,000 ordinance yet.
Well, very quickly, the reason that it didn't, it didn't, it doesn't require any kind of a land use change, because Chapter 11 is specific only to the building code, as you said. So any amendments we make to Chapter 11 couldn't go effect until we have the land use issue resolved. So even if we say in our building code, you can do X, Y, and Z, the fundamental question always starts with, does the zoning allow it? And so, again, I think looking at some alternatives, we can't easily do.
Is there a piece in our land use code that allows churches to have temporary overnight camping?
There is not, and that's the problem.
So that's why we, so.
That's why.
So we even have a conflict right now that we, some passport adopted this language, but didn't go through the land use portions of, like churches are allowed by right in rural residential, we'd have to have something in that rural residential section of our land use code that says churches are allowed to have temporary overnight camping?
Right. Or some flexibility in the code to sort of be able to interpret that. And again, as I'm thinking about this, and we're looking at different code changes, you know, again, we have the, the good news in terms of our land use code, which is big and clunky and has needed updating for, you know, decades, is that the board has directed us and staff is in the process of doing so. So if there ever was a time, frankly, to look at doing something in the lane code, and this doesn't mean we won't follow through on the idea of a pilot within the city, because I really think that's a good idea to look at if we, if we can do something that's not codified. But again, land management is currently on this path where we're updating our land use code. And again, if there's a discussion that the board would like staff to have as we go down, and we talk to communities about the code changes, you know, this will be Chapter 16, too. We're doing Chapter 16 light right now. But when we get to doing the real overhaul of Chapter 16, which is on our work plan, that's the place, I think, to look at those land use issues, because that is our land use code.
Thank you. Commissioner Bozovich.
So just to follow up on that, specific to being within the urban growth boundary, everything that's within an urban growth boundary that's not annexed right now has a UL on it, urbanizable land. So we have a section in our land use code that's specific to UL? Or doesn't, doesn't speak to UL at all?
No, our code doesn't speak to UL. If you recall, the UL was the old county code. And when the city of Eugene brought its code forward and did the land use code update LUCA, the county didn't, chose not to do the same changes. So Eugene has two codes, right, the, I call it the UT code, because you're right, it's that urban transition. And so again, that's the challenge, is the Eugene code has gone in one direction, and the county code somewhat amended in the earlier days, in the 90s, lies to the rest of the area.
I was just looking for a specific place where we could address that, that doughnut. But I, I understand, I get it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bozovich. Commissioner Sorenson.
So I'm, I'm frustrated by this sense of, there are things we can do, but they're way out there. I just want to know what's going to happen later today. What's going to happen when we end this session? Are we going to have an, I'm hearing we're going to have another session on August 1st. So what's going to actually happen between now and August 1st to address the issue? The people that have been coming in here have not been talking about the rural unincorporated areas. They've been talking about the areas that are adjacent to Eugene. And so what can we do to address that issue? Because there are homeless people, they're not just in the city of Eugene, they're in the adjacent urbanizable land that's under the county's land use control. And there are existing agreements with the city with regard to who administers the land use, the building codes within those areas. So we already have agreements with them. And I just want to, I'm just really frustrated that the citizens come in here and they ask us to do something, and the board says, hey, this is a legitimate problem. And I mean, I'm not, I'm not hearing anyone say, don't do this as it applies to Eugene. It could be a pilot, you know, if we're not going to address all rural land in the county, we're just going to address the thousands of people who have been counted in Eugene and Springfield as being homeless. What are we going to do between now and the 1st? What's different that's going to happen on August 1st than today? That's what I want to know. I want to know, what tangible steps are we going to be making to deal with this?
Thank you, Commissioner Sorenson. I'm going to call on Mr. Mokr Heiski. But first, once again, land use and humans, you know? And what I, what we're talking about here is finding a way to do something. And whether it's a pilot, whatever it may be, I can understand and appreciate it, because I've heard from moms who are so upset because their kids have to go through the things that their kids have to go through just to go to school. And if we're going to do something about it, even if it's on an interim basis until we do a more comprehensive code update, and, you know, these moms don't, you dizzy them with code, with the Chapter 11 and Chapter 16, and Chapter this and Chapter that, what they care about is their kids succeeding. Mr. Mokr Heiski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is really a policy question. So the board had asked us to, in response to the public comment that was provided, to do an analysis and then report those findings to you. So that's what we're doing here today. Again, we had the conversation, I asked for Mr. Manillo to be here, because I think it's important for the board and the public to understand, there is a, there are broader strategies that we are actively participating in and leading, as it relates both to emergency and temporary shelter, as well as longer-term supportive housing investments. This, this request for a change to the existing county code is one piece of, I think, what would be deemed a temporary shelter, emergency shelter, housing strategy. So we've informed you, I think, about some of the constraints and challenges and the options going forward. And what I would say, Commissioner Sorenson, to answer your question directly, is we'll seek the board's direction. If you, if you would like for us to, now knowing, so that's our job is to inform you of, of the facts and present you with some options and the implications of any decisions that you may make. And then I'll give it to you and ask for direction. If you would like for us to pursue, you know, language that we could bring forward to the board to adjust our existing code, consistent with the comments that have been brought forward, we can do that. You understand what the workload and the, and the cost and the challenges with that would, would be. On August 1st, you will hear an update on our supportive housing initiatives, particularly related to the behavioral health project, the, the supportive housing project at Behavioral Health off of MLK, as well as the concept for another supportive housing project on another county property. So that, that conversation, I think, is going to be particularly focused on longer-term permanent supportive housing projects the county is involved with. But we certainly, I think, will provide an update on other strategies at that time. So if the board would like us to pursue a certain course, then we'd ask for your direction on that.
Thank you for that explanation, Mr. Mokr Heiski. And I'll point out that Mr. Manillo mentioned our budget committee unanimously approved continuation of the dawn-to-dusk program. And that's huge. What we're doing there is huge in regards to an emergency response. And a part of that program is 12 parking spaces on, at LCBH, in the parking lot at LCBH. Now, one thing that I'd like to find out is what's the difference between us providing 12 spaces and allowing a church or synagogue to provide two or three spaces? Because we are doing it already inside, right, it's inside the city limits, so that probably makes it, is probably the significant issue there. But, but really, how do we move forward? How can we find a way to make this happen? And then, as far as direction is concerned, Ms. McKinney, I think you've, you've heard the board, we are, each of us, other than Commissioner Williams, who I have not called on yet, he may have something to say, we're in support of looking to find a way for potentially a pilot project that does not involve a deep-involved Chapter 11, Chapter 16 review, that could make something happen using whatever public process is necessary for that. August 1st is quite a ways down the road, if you are somebody who is wondering where your trail is going to be tomorrow. So, but if August 1st is what it needs to be, then, then so be it. But moving forward with this, I'm going to call on Commissioner Liken, and then see if you have any questions regarding direction, or see if you can restate what the direction is that I just stated. Go ahead, Commissioner Liken.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And the discussion's very good, and I, and I appreciate the comments coming from Commissioner Sorenson. But let's remember, Oregon has the most complex land use system in the entire United States, and has since 1973, and ongoing. And so it is, it is challenging. I don't know if folks are aware, most other states in the country do not have urban growth boundaries. They don't have UGBs. They just build. And so we have that. So it is complex. And, and it's, and, and so I appreciate that. The UL, I'm glad you brought that up. And by the way, it was my city before I was elected, really pushed back on that. And you may recognize the names, Stu Burge, Greg Shaver, Jesse Maine, with the support of Mayor Bill Morset. And that was a pushback back in the early 90s that began an entire change. If, and, and so that's a lot of that, where, where, so I'm glad you brought that up, because I kind of forgot until you'd mentioned that. And I'm thinking, oh, I remember the folks who really pushed back on that. And it was the city of Springfield back on some other, some other issues involving the county at the time. And, and, and so I was not elected then. But anyway, so, but I appreciate that. But, but I, but I think that, you know, I'm, hopefully, we can come up with some sort of answers here. But it is a complex land use system that we live in here in Oregon. We have the 19 goals. We don't have a goal 20 that deals with counties, unfortunately, even though former Attorney General Dave Fromeier suggested that, and actually had written some things down about that, but it never was, was adopted. So it, it's, it's going to be challenging in, as, as far as moving forward. But I think we can create a path to actually create a pilot to get this done. And that's what I'm hoping for. So I, anyway, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're hearing probably more plea than direction. Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is quite a, quite a topic to wrestle with. I agree with the comments that my colleagues have expressed. Commissioner Sorenson had some very, very strong and valid points. I also appreciate Commissioner Liken's comments. When you look back at the ramifications of Senate Bill 100 of, what, 1974? Incidentally, that was the very first political activity I was ever involved in. So, but I, I look at that, we do have a very complex and comprehensive land use planning situation in Oregon. I heard a couple of words that, I like to do things, encapsulate them in bullet form more than any other way. But I heard it stated that perhaps there are ways that some of these issues can be relaxed. And I also heard several time the issue surrounding pilot project, which I think makes sense. It, it's one of these things that I'm reluctant to say go slow on, but we got to get this issue right. And how do we solve the immediate situation with those people that find themselves in difficult times? I have said before, and I will reiterate, that I believe that the way this can be accomplished best is public-private partnerships. And so we have to create, create that atmosphere, foster that atmosphere, and, and pursue it with vigor. And we can, we can mitigate some of these, these issues. So, thank, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Then, yeah, Commissioner Bozovich, and then I'll sum up with a couple of words.
Thanks. And I, I'll support the idea of looking into a pilot program. I'm not quite sure how that will work code-wise and all. I, I'm, I'm struggling, if it's legally hard to do it on a permanent basis, how we can do it legally on a temporary basis as a pilot. So with that, I'd also like to see us provide direction, as, as we are currently working through our code modernization project, that we look at getting the language into code that, that will allow for the churches to do what they want to do anywhere in the county. You know, if, you know, we have it in one piece of code, we need to put it into the zoning piece that, that has the language that's a permitted use. And at the same time, work on expanding that to commercial businesses and public entities. And I, one of the reasons why the Eugene code has that is 4J used to host, you know, on some of their property, some, some camping. I don't know if they still do, but I remember, in particular, they had, had down in the, at their headquarters in the, in the Whittaker neighborhood, some folks camping there.
Parking lot near an old stadium.
Yeah. And so that's, you know, not losing sight of, let's keep that in part of the instructions on the permanent code changes, to look at those issues. Because I don't, you know, I don't foresee this being, as long as we keep it limited to those, with the conditions that are about the sanitary facilities needing to be provided, and the limitation on number of vehicles and all, I don't see that. We haven't seen places in Eugene where churches hosting overnight campers become a real issue with neighborhoods and all. It just hasn't been. So I, I'm not foreseeing that generating some great groundswell against us, including that in our code updates. Granted, that may be two or three years out before we finish those code updates. But if we don't start now, that two or three years just keeps moving down the line. So I'm all for looking at the legal. So I'm all for looking at the legalities of being able to do a pilot project. I'll support that idea. But at the same time, I don't want to lose the focus on, let's wrap this into our permanent code changes.
Thank you, Commissioner Bozovic. And I'll point out that in Section 2 of Municipal Code 4816, it talks about some very strident rules that these campers have to abide by and the hosts have to abide by, including garbage disposal, including sanitary facilities, and storage facilities that allow, that prevent any visibility from the road of any unsightly accumulation. So, it's, there, once again, it's, the ground's been broken on this, Mr. Mark Ryske. And I'm going to put it back to you. You've heard us talk about it, you know where the passion lies. And you pointed out that we do have a broader approach to poverty and homelessness in Lane County. And we do, we have our Poverty and Homelessness Board. There's nothing quite like it that I've seen anyplace in Oregon, or in the nation for that matter, that is taking a comprehensive look at how we can work together with municipalities and with private and other nonprofits to make things happen in ways that they don't happen anyplace else. And, you know, that's kind of what I'm looking for, is how do we tread this, obviously, a very difficult path, to find a way to make something happen that's not going to create an uproar? So, thank you, Mr. Mark Ryske.
Mr. Chair, so what I heard is that the board would like to do something, and we'll work on what that something specifically looks like, related to a pilot project under the existing code. A lot of the discussion here this morning has been focused on the policy side, and I think as we move forward, we also need to think about the operational administrative side. Of course, we know that in the city of Eugene, there's been a significant amount of staff time and effort that is required, not just in managing the, establishing and managing the policy, but actually managing the program. So we'll need to think about, you know, as this pilot moves on, and if that morphs into something larger, who is responsible? What entity and what staff group within the county or outside the county is going to be responsible for managing that? If it is resources within the county, we'll need to have that conversation. And then, of course, the conversation about the impacts of that as it relates to other initiatives that are being done. So we will get our group together, we'll look at reviewing the existing code and identifying a pilot project with parameters that we could put into place and bring that discussion back to the board. I'm not sure exactly when we can do that. I know where the board is, you only have two meetings in July. So depending on when we can get all that information together, if we can't get back to you in July, I think in the August timeframe is doable.
Thank you, Mr. Mark Ryske. And before I call on Commissioner Sorensen, just a slight correction. You said we want to do something. You actually went on to state something very, very specific. So it's not just a broad something that we're asking for. And what I'm asking for is three camping units in churches or businesses inside the urban growth boundary outside of cities. But whether or not that's what we end up with, then you delineated something that is a perfectly reasonable approach. So Commissioner Sorensen.
Yeah, I just wanted to add two more ideas. I think that we've kind of touched on them, but, you know, we kind of focused on churches, which I think is the easiest and most obvious place where people are, the congregations are offering to help the homeless, and they see it as part of their mission to do so. But I also want to mention two other types of landowners. One is public, and that would include Lane County parks especially, but not just Lane County parks. Could include other public landowners. And much of the same rationale that the churches are using, namely that it's providing a place, positive place for homeless people to temporarily reside, but it's also providing the security for the church, and it's providing security in this sense for the park. And the city of Eugene, and I'm not sure if there's others that have used this technique, but they've used it specifically in their parks. And that's been a very positive thing, because it gives the homeless people, you know, an opportunity to do something positive, to help protect that park, just as other homeless people are protecting churches. And it is something that is a big problem for us as a park-managing agency, or the Forest Service, or the BLM, or Eugene Water and Electric Board, or Lane Community College, or any other public landowner that has security concerns. And last but not least, would be the industrial landowners. Same thing. They're spending money on security, they'd like to have people on site, not in all cases, but in some cases. And again, this is a way of thinking about this problem in a more, you know, in a more comprehensive fashion. So, sounds like we're going to have a meeting on August 1st and take it from there.
Thank you, Commissioner Sorensen. Mr. Mark Ryske, anything else you'd need to hear from the board?
I think so.
Ms. McKinney?
You.
Mr. Dingle?
No.
Ms. Manella? Thank you very much for being here this morning. And thanks to the board for a good discussion that really covered a pretty broad area, a broad spectrum. I'd like to point out that we have an 1130 Time Certain, which is an interview, a follow-up interview for the performance auditor position. Between then and now, we have a certain executive session that will need to take place. So we'll move back on our agenda to item nine, excuse me.
Item A.
9A.
Chair Farr, if you wouldn't mind, I would just do my announcements real short.
Okay, that's 10A, but, okay.
I know I mentioned this to the board, but I wanted to state it again, that yesterday was officially Sarachinsky's first day as Assistant County Counsel One in my office. So she has now physically moved to my office, and she is officially on board and on the letterhead. And second of all, I think I'd be remiss if I did not mention the Oregon State University baseball. Currently ranked number one in the country, 52 and 4, and sweeping out of their regional and will be hosting the superregional against Vanderbilt this weekend in Corvallis.
I'll reserve my comments for executive session. Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Dingle. Mr. Mark Ryske, 9A is county administration announcements.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Briefly, just wanted to share with the board, I had an opportunity last Thursday with Mr. Kyler and Phil Lemon from the Oregon Judicial Department, to meet with several legislators after the board's interviews on Thursday morning for the performance auditor. Went up to Salem and we met with Senator Devlin, Representative Nathanson, and Senator Gerard. And really, really nice meetings there. Appreciate, in particular, Mr. Kyler's efforts to set those up. And Representative Nathanson, as you can imagine, was extremely busy. The House was actually in session and had a number of votes, so we didn't have time, she didn't have time to meet with us in her office, but she was gracious enough to come out in between those votes. And we'd get about 30 to 45 seconds in between votes. And I should say that the purpose of the discussions was related to our courthouse funding request. So a lot, obviously, a lot of interest in the ongoing discussions with the city of Eugene around the property, the location for our project and the city's project. So Representative Nathanson, we sort of would pop in and out, and we'd get 30 or 45 seconds, and she would express a comment or a question or a concern, and we would have a short time to respond to that, and then they'd come out and yell, "Vote!" She'd run back in and say, "Hang on," and then come back out. So about four times this happened. And it was a great lesson in civics at the state level. So appreciated the time that Representative Nathanson, Senator Devlin, and Senator Gerard took, and really good discussions, great appreciation for the work that's happening at the county, and the partnership with the city, and understanding of what the county has done as it relates to balancing our budget, improving our bond rating, the jail levy, and there was certainly recognition of the incredible work and support from the voters, 73% renewal there. So appreciate that. I understand that Commissioner Liken has also had some meetings, and I think a number of commissioners have had an opportunity to do that. We, real quickly, we had the spring interns for our equity internship program last week. Every time we do these for each term, for our equity internship program, paid internships for students, mostly students at the University of Oregon, but also LCC, and even those who have graduated, focused on recruiting diverse applicants. And this session, I think we had five human resources, youth services, county administration, assessment and taxation, and technology services. And so they gave a presentation. Commissioner Williams attended that, and thank you, Commissioner, for being at that. And it was just great to see this outstanding talent from the University of Oregon, this really diverse group of students and former students, and the great work that they're doing, bringing fresh ideas and tackling projects in our departments. We, with that note, we have an Equity and Access Advisory Board meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, June 7th, from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. at Ternleton, open to the public and anyone who's interested in attending there. And then I wanted to share that we're kicking off a regular series with KNND. This is Cameron in Cottage Grove, and the sheriff has a regular show. They've extended, the sheriff's actually offered us to participate in that, so I'm going to do it. We're going to branch out and invite other elected officials and department heads to talk about different issues. Cameron just does a fantastic job, and it's a nice way to reach out to South Lane County residents. So I'm sure we'll be reaching out to commissioners and others on that in the future. That's it. Let's see if you have questions.
Thank you. Did Senator Devlin remember the time that he jump-started my car?
Yes, yes. So we got a nice, a nice smile out of him from that.
Excellent. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Williams?
I do have a comment. Thank you, Mr. Chair. You mentioned KNND and Cameron Reiden, an exceptional young man. I do, on the third Monday of each month, spend an hour on his beeper program as well. Commissioner Stewart had done that for a number of years, and so I am continuing that. Tune in. 1400, it is an AM station. So, thank you.
Perfect. Commissioner Bozovic?
Thank you. I just wanted to note that our county administrator is now officially a lobbyist. And that term lobbying actually came from exactly the activity you were doing last Thursday, pulling people off the floor into the lobby to talk to them between votes. And that's where the term lobbying came from, and lobbyist. So, welcome to the club, you're now officially a lobbyist.
It wasn't that long ago that representatives and senators didn't have a separate office. Their office was their desk on the floor, so the only place you could talk to them was in the lobby. Very good. Then I'll remind that 1130, we'll be interviewing over here in Harris Hall, we'll be interviewing Mr. Ian Green, as a follow-up interview for the position of performance auditor. In the meantime, we will have an executive session, after which we will return to Harris Hall. So with no further business, I'm going to read us into executive session for Thursday, excuse me, for Tuesday.
When do you commission this?
Let's see. Mr. Mark Ryske, we...
What do you want to wait?
Let's wait.
Yeah, that's fine.
If we, the executive session could take a little longer than a normal executive session. The Board of County Commissioners will meet an executive session to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent. This executive session is held pursuant to ORS 192.6602A, which allows the Board of Commissioners to meet an executive session for the purposes listed above. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general purpose, the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision shall be made in executive session. We do reserve the right to come back out into public session should the need arise. And, Mr. Mark, let's see. Okay. So at the sound of the gavel...
You need to read us also for real estate, don't you?
We do. I don't see the language on that.
There should be an ORS relative to real property transactions.
Okay, okay. Excuse me, an amendment to that.
Thank you.
This executive session shall be held in pursuant to ORS 192.6602A and E, which allows the Board of Commissioners to meet an executive session for the purposes listed above. So that included real estate, real property transactions, along with the staff deliberation. So at the sound of the gavel, we will retire into executive session and return to Harris Hall before 1130. Regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you all for being here this morning, this afternoon. It's still morning, excuse me. We're currently waiting for a dial-up with the, for an interview, a follow-up interview with Ian Green for performance auditor.
Ian Green speaking.
Good morning, Mr. Green. This is Chair Pat Farr, Lane County Board of Commissioners. Thank you for joining us this morning. We're working through perhaps a technical issue here?
No worries.
Oh, you can hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, good. Then I'm going to ask each county commissioner to introduce themselves, so we can do a mic check for potential follow-up questions. I'll begin with Commissioner Sorensen.
Good morning, Mr. Green. This is Pete Sorensen.
Good morning, Mr. Green. Jay Bozovic.
Good morning, Sid Liken.
Good morning, Gary Williams.
Does that mic check sound okay to you, Mr. Green?
Yes, everybody came through loud and clear.
Excellent. We have three questions, which will take 15 minutes to conduct all three questions. I will ask the questions, they may be, each question may be, receive a follow-up question from a county commissioner. Our first question for you today, Mr. Green, is can you talk a little bit about why you want to work for Lane County?
Absolutely. So I've been following Shanda Miller's efforts to kind of rebuild the performance audit function with Lane County. So I was a little disappointed to hear when she was planning to leave the county, but I saw it as an opportunity for myself to continue those efforts she's done to really add value to the organization, improve assurance services, and advise the board. So I really saw it as an ability for me to take that baton from her and continue to build a strong internal audit function, and really help the citizens of Lane County. Another thing that really intrigued me about the position was the ability to lead an audit function. That's something I've been aspiring to for a number of years, so this position in Lane County really would meet my goals in terms of my career path I want to be on. Another thing that really intrigues me about local government is the ability to affect change rapidly and quickly. One of the challenges with working with the state government, or challenges I've seen with the federal government, is it's kind of like turning the Titanic around. Change is very incremental and slow, whereas based on my experience working with local government, you're able to really effectively change processes and practices and programs to meet the needs of the citizens. So that's something that really appeals to me. And then lastly, I think Lane County is a great place to live, work, and play, great place to raise a family. So all of those kind of extra benefits really intrigue me about this position.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Commissioners, any follow-up questions for Mr. Green on the first item? I see none, Mr. Green. I'll move along to the second question. Can you tell us about your experience working with an elected board? What differences do you expect to encounter, or what will be your approach?
So I started off my career in government, serving for one year as an advisor to the city of Lake Oswego's city council. So that was probably the most direct experience I have working with an elected board. That was a position where I did research, presented my findings to the board, or the city council. I also attended all public meetings and all executive sessions, and provided my input and advice throughout that process. So that, again, you know, speaks to my experience working with local government, seeing how much change can be affected at that level. With respect to my experience at the Secretary of State's office... With respect to my experience at the Secretary of State's office, I would like to connect that to working for an elected official as well. So, I have over six years of working with elected officials, including legislators, boards, and commissions at the state government level. The key difference I see is kind of the reporting structure. Reporting directly to the Board in Lane County will pose new challenges in terms of public meetings law, I've needed to become more familiar around that legislation, developing a communication strategy with all of the Board members, make sure I'm hearing their concerns, and auditing on their priorities as well as the organization's priorities as a whole. So, I would develop relationships with each Board member, make sure I understand what issues are really critical to them, what programs need a review or audit or risk assessment, and really try to focus on meeting both the Board's priorities as a whole, as well as individual Board members concerned.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Green. Commissioners, any follow-up? There are no follow-up questions, Mr. Green? Then, we'll move along to number three, which is regarding conflict. Can you describe a conflict you've had with an audity? What were the issues, and how did you resolve that situation?
Yeah, I'd like to preface this question with really, how, conflict is not how an auditor can be most effective. Really, you don't want to be creating conflict because you're not going to be able to affect real change in an organization if you have a conflict with the management team. You really want to build those relationships, get management buy-in to drive that real change and improvement in an organization. So, it's not my practice to create issues that result in conflicts between auditor and audity. I'll give you a very recent example with my current audit of the Oregon Health Authority. We had scheduled about three weeks back a meeting for yesterday, where we were going to go over some of their plans and progress in various areas of their program that's under audit. And last week, we had a monthly update meeting with the agency where they expressed some concerns with workload. A number of staff had multiple priorities they had to address, so there was really a scheduling conflict for, you know, holding the meeting yesterday would have really burdened the department and the management team and these particular staff that are working on these critical issues. So, what I did to find a solution is that I worked with them to reschedule that meeting to later in the month that more fit with their schedule, and it worked for me. And it really just required me to reprioritize the work I was doing in order to accomplish all the milestones and timeline that I'd committed to under the audit. And it was a really simple solution that was a win for both the auditor and the audity. I was able to continue to move the audit forward while at the same time providing management an opportunity to get some of these workload concerns addressed and really have a really thoughtful meeting rather than an unproductive meeting. The other area that I see kind of from my experience with conflict is when you get to the report, and when management first sees the audit report and the findings written down, that can often generate some conflict between auditor and audity. So, one practice I do during my audits is to share as early and as often as possible potential findings. So, they understand the concerns we are seeing as we're conducting our audit, so they can provide feedback on those concerns as well as start to process, you know, what changes need to be made in order to fix those areas. And throughout that process, I will discuss the evidence that I'm using to make as the basis of my claims, and really walking through the evidence and the logic behind it and how the recommendations will address the risk area we've identified. That really starts to break down any of those concerns you get in reporting or conflicts by having everybody understand the issues, understand what is the cause of a problem, understand what the effect is of that problem, and understand how a recommendation will address that cause and move the organization towards its mission and its goals. And then, obviously, I would revise the audit report based on any feedback I have throughout that process.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Green. Follow-up questions from the Board? I see none, Mr. Green. Then, I'll offer you an opportunity if you have any questions for the Board of County Commissioners.
I think the only question I have is I know the performance audit position had been vacant for a number of years, and I was curious on the Board's commitment to that position kind of in the long-term going forward.
Thank you. And I'll ask if Commissioner Sorensen has a response to that.
Well, I think that it's been a long, slow journey from the beginnings of the idea of having an independent performance auditor. You know, at first, the Board was reluctant to do it. You know, I'm just going by, you know, seven-year increments here. Then, the idea was accepted by the Board, and there were some mismatches in terms of people that really weren't, they were financial auditors who were not suited to be a performance auditor. So, I would describe the second 27-year period as being somewhat of a mismatch of the position. And then, last but least is, and really now, is a really great match with Ms. Miller and the Board and the Committee that we've set up to be the intermediary between the Board and the performance auditor. I think that the most recent, you know, years have been very positive, and it's been great for the organization. So, I would say, you know, it was vacant for a while in that interim period, but I think we've really come a long way by the policies that Ms. Miller has recommended and that the Committee has been recommending to us. So, I think things have been going rather smoothly recently. But you're right, if you look at it over a 20-year period, you know, we didn't have any performance auditor at all, and now we do have a pretty functioning, pretty functioning performance auditor that we're all pretty happy about. And as you mentioned, we're not that happy that Ms. Miller is leaving, but that's really her decision, and we're looking for a good person to succeed her.
Thank you, Commissioner Sorensen. Mr. Green, Commissioner Lykan was the chair of the last search committee for Ms. Miller. He has a couple of comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Ian, again, thank you for answering the questions, and I really appreciate it. Just to add on to Commissioner Sorensen's comments, I think the important thing here is that Shanda really established what I would call the professional aspect of the auditor. So, the auditor's position now, I really look at as, it's now a professional position, and now the Board has what I would consider to be expectations. And so, that's where I think that you can count on, at least this Board, but I think continuing on, that once you have a professional position established like it has been established, I think it's pretty safe to say this is going to be something that'll be very important, not only this Board, but for Boards in the future. And I say that based on what some of the Commissioner Sorensen's comments, you're not necessarily going to find past audits. I mean, that's been the biggest challenge, is the, maybe audits were performed, but we can't necessarily find copies of them. Now, the audits that have been performed by Shanda, or by Ms. Miller, you can say has now, you have copies of those, you can go refer if you wish. I mean, they're available, and it's something I expect, we will continue to have that expectation. But again, thank you for answering the questions, they were very concise, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner Lykan. Ms. Green, does that satisfy your question?
It certainly does.
And in short, what you heard basically is this Board is strongly committed to this position of performance auditor. It's not internal auditor, it's performance auditor. And while we cannot speak for future Boards, we are committed. Then, any further questions, Mr. Green, for the Board of County Commissioners?
No, I have none.
Then, I'll briefly tell you what the process is from this point. We have a, the balance of, we'll go into break for the lunch period, we'll go into, then this afternoon, beginning at 1:30, we have a regular agenda of public works items, which will be followed by an executive session where we will discuss this interview today. And subsequent to the executive session, we may come back into regular session with the direction for the county staff. We may determine that we have more questions. So, one way or another, someone should be in contact with you later this afternoon to let you know what the next step by the Board of County Commissioners is.
Sounds great.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Green.
Have a good day, everyone.
All right. Then, any further business for the Board this morning? We'll return at 1:30, it's not a time certain, but public works will be here at 1:30. We are recessed.
Thank you. Right. On time for you, Commissioner Sorensen.